And if they're not, we need to find lines for them to meet.
I'm taking all of your part much.
Just hear about it.
Yeah, I did that, yeah, the president.
So we just have to be sure that.
We had trust up last year.
Yes. Very clear pointing out there's no language here it is.
Friday, August thirty third.
That's already there.
The kids go by.
I only have forty one with trucks, like that, and a tractor.
Yeah, normally on six thousand and ten.
Okay.
Yeah Judy, uh Judy.
I heard of that, yeah.
And then, uh, last week, okay. Okay, um, so we'll call this meeting to order. Alright, and we'll start with the flag review.
When legally certified of the United States of America and through the Republic of Canada, for one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, audience and citizens, we have Jeff Cooper, President.
Yeah. Yeah.
And then, uh, we have Link here, which I don't think counts as audience and citizens, and.
Sorry, Patty Masti.
Patty Masti, okay, we have Patty Masti here as well. Uh, approval of meeting minutes, we have meeting minutes from September ninth, did anybody have any revisions or questions on these minutes?
Can you give us that here? I'm running motion though.
Your motion?
Second.
No, Scott McExclusion is second.
I made a motion.
I'll second.
Where is the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Motion carried and approved. Unfinished business, uh, item A is phase two of the surveyor, I think the last update was, um, you were gonna look around for, for grant money and whatnot, and there was that one particular grant application there looking at.
Yep, so I started talking to John, the, the E O, um, he's gonna help me start getting that written up. Um, he said that the minimum for this grant is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So what we'll have to do is take the bids that we got for the, um, surveying, and then we're gonna work with probably town engineering to try and come up with some more plans and some more, um, estimates for future projects up there, um, because again, the minimum for that grant is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, they won't give us any less.
Part of that could be what Scott talked about in the past with the development behind the Sterling Business Facility, AKA the incubator building.
Yeah.
Pulling in some of the property back there, or, um, anything like that, I'm sure they won't have trouble finding cost increases.
But that grant will cover quite a bit of the development of phase two. So I can work with anybody who wants to work with me on it to come up with.
Can, can we use it to extend the road?
Yes, so it's gonna be used to, um, survey, subdivide, extend the water and sewer, and then extend the road.
Okay.
So.
As I said, minimum two fifty, did they have a, a maximum amount?
No.
And this is a state grant?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, well, the road, I mean, just to extend the road is a lot per foot.
Yeah.
I'll work with that.
Can, can you, uh, forward the documents on, um, the grant, the source documents, those, or what, what the grant is, or the constraints are and all that?
I'll send you all the stuff I have so far.
Okay, excellent.
Yeah. I have, I have a question, so this fellow went up there and looked at this, right, this surveyor?
The one that sent the RFPs?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, I was, I'm still thinking we got them on the dirt.
No, you're good.
Okay, I figured out. Right.
You're good.
Okay, any other updates there, or is that it?
No, that was it.
Okay. We have motion to table phase two surveyor RFP?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do we see members, um, so with this we had, uh, we have it later in new business, but we have another opening, Judy, um, resigned last week.
Okay.
I haven't had a chance to call her yet, I'll call her this week to talk to her.
Alright.
But any other updates, Sarah, on position opening?
I haven't had anything so far, or anybody that's come to me. Um, I talked to a couple people, but they're kinda dippy. So, um, I'm gonna probably post something on the Facebook page for the Sterling Town Hall, and then if you guys can share it to Sterling Uncensored, or any of those other Facebook pages, that's great.
Alright. Alright, then I'll reach out to Judy and I've been recalled.
Okay.
Um, she could say in her notes, it's due to health issues, I'll send her, uh, I'll send her flowers when we're done here or something.
Yeah, I'll choose mom.
Okay, um, can you send me your address? E D C Financials, oh wait, uh, so can we have a motion to table, do we see members set it up today?
Yes.
Is that you? You will say, all in favor?
Aye.
E D C Financials, so we have the quarterly financial reports here, um, the one thing I just wanted to mention is the Dado Tech rent for September, I take it it wasn't received by the end of the month and cutoff?
It was not, not.
Okay, has it been received yet though?
I believe I got it from Danny of his mom.
Okay, alright, so we'll see that in the next report, um. And then the SBA cell power, just to remind everybody, the rent is the fixed rent fifteen twenty eighty-eight, that's received in the physical rent to lease the, the land for, the profit sharing is the amount that changes on a monthly basis that's billed for the previous month, or, or remitted to us halfway through the next month. And that changes depending on the activity and the barriers on the town. That one, um. So you'll see the September profit, that'll be received in October, which is why you don't see it on there. Did you have any questions on this, you had?
Uh, if, I know she's gonna have an answer, that which is good, the adjustments that you made, your bank statement adjustments, would you, can you?
That interest earned on the bank account.
Okay, okay, thank you, and the other one, we're paying the revenue collector six hundred and fifty dollars, what was that for?
Um, I believe that was sewer and water up at the industrial park.
Okay, so she's doing the water, okay, thank you, very good.
And, and the, uh, the bank adjustment, you'll see that, we saw that in the previous reports, because at the bank, it's the time funder held in one account and then it's put out there.
The money in, I mean, checking account, uh, do we have in the mall account, we have in there.
I can send that to everyone and give you the amount.
No, that's, that's why, that's why you're right, you know, you sent it before, I was wondering.
Does, does the insurance have a lot of big one up there?
I'm gonna be looking at it coming up this next year, um, because our insurance, so our insurance hasn't raised since I've paid it since I've been here, um, but I think we could get better rates, so I'm gonna be looking at it next year.
But what I recall, that is not a one-off policy on its own, there's other policies in the town that are also
Yes, yeah.
part of that arrangement, so it wouldn't just be sending our particular line out for quote, there would be other insured lines that could also happen.
Okay.
So it's not that we can unilaterally do ourselves, it's something the town would have to make a larger decision on.
Alright.
Okay, any, any other questions or, um, items anybody wants to discuss within the revenues or expenses?
Nope.
There's no other items, can we get a motion to approve the revenue report and expense report, uh, for July first through September thirty?
I make a motion to accept the expense and revenue report, uh, July to nine thirty. Seven, it's all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The business brochure directory, so we were working on updating the directory for the town, uh, which you had done a lot of work on last meeting, you distributed the list, uh, to all the members. Any other updates there, or?
Uh, now unless you guys.
Just continuing to work on it?
Yeah, now unless you guys have input on that list, um, you guys gone through, crossed people off, or added anybody, um, so aside that, I don't really have any other, other updates on that. Just waiting on input from everyone.
Okay. Yeah, I went through the list, we'll have to check, I gotta talk to my neighbor who's on there, um, but is everybody, did, for the people we have a point of contact for, did we make them aware of the business directory going up on the website, or?
So as of right now, all I'm doing is looking for the list of businesses, um, so that list is comprised of what Renee had on her business directory, and then, um, any input that I've had from anybody. I, I haven't made anyone aware that their business is growing up from the website, I can't.
If we could, I mean, I, I know we'd be calling everybody, might be a bit of a challenge, but if we have a physical address, perhaps we can send the address out, we could send a letter to that address, and part of what that will accomplish too is it'll insurance a valid address, because you'll get return mail, or if that business no longer operates there, doesn't operate here, and get returned sender, you know, pull them off the list.
I'll do that later. Alright.
Yeah, I, I recommend doing that, just to make sure, and within that letter, it could just be, hey, we're gonna put a business directory up, we have your business as known as operating, if this is no longer operating, or if you do not wish to be included, please contact us at, and then give them whatever lines of contact, email, phone address, and then they can let us know if they don't want to be included, or if they're no longer a business. And then anything we get returned to sender, we'll just scrub off as well.
Alright, I'll write something up and then I'll send it to you.
What is it, about a hundred?
Hundred and fifty, or so.
Okay, okay. Do I do, uh, mail merge? And stuff, alright, that should be pretty easy. Alright, uh, can we have a motion to table the brochure of business directory for the next meeting?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then former town hall, do we have any updates on this? I know we had a document packet that went out, Peter looked at it, oh, that's right, you weren't here last meeting.
No.
Um, and you had looked into it, was there anything you wanted to report?
Well, I can't find anything after two thousand, two thousand eleven, I mean, she's trying to, I tried to, I tried to put it together as best I could between two thousand four and two thousand eleven. And I still can't find anything beyond what is already recorded in the court's office, it's already mentioned in here. And if there is anything, I would like somebody to come up with it, I don't, but I think we should have a discussion with this guy, if I may.
Link, does that make sense that there's been nothing after two thousand eleven, if I recall, you said that this had gone through legal proceedings, and then it just sort of fell off the map, if I recall correctly?
That's exactly right, I can't tell you the exact year that the legal proceeding took place, but I would say two thousand eleven is probably the year. And it's just nothing been done since.
Yeah, no.
That's the reason that not a lot of evidence anywhere, because there's nothing, there's nothing has been done, the building has simply sat till last what year?
Well, I mean, I read, you know, I mean, back and forth, back and forth with, with Russell, Russell was here, and, uh, I don't know, I think we gotta do something, because the building is going to waste, and we're gonna get to a point where, you know, it can't be reconditioned, we're not gonna put no money into that building, in my, my opinion, I don't know what anybody else feels about, but we have to unload it, in one way or another, we have to unload it.
But one way I see money going into that building, if there was similar to the industrial park, if there was some sort of grant funding from a historical society, right, uh, due to the age of the building, in which you were receiving funds to, to renovate it from it, so.
Well, does it fall into the history?
And I don't know, and I don't, and I'm not saying it does, I'm saying that if there is a chance, knowing that the building was constructed in the seventeen hundreds, that would probably be like, oh, it could be something.
Maybe historical, um, maybe no, no, um, I don't, maybe not.
Yeah, I don't know if the town would have interest in, um, okay, the only funds in that.
The only time I would ever like to find that is, I would be happy to see the building utilized, okay?
Yeah.
As opposed to just sitting and wasting away, which is, you're right, that's exactly what's happening with the building, eventually you'll get to the point where groupage, and that'll be a while yet, but, uh, it'll happen, if nothing, if nothing else does, it's just, we have to remember that that building has to be used for some town function.
That's correct.
And, and if, um, if a grant could be realized with that in mind, uh, for a specific reason, that'd be wonderful. But we can't, as far as unloading the building?
Well, when I try to.
And I understand your thinking, Peter says that, if you do that, you're gonna have to go back to court. There's just no other way, because that whole thing was settled with a court judgment, to turn it, to open it again, it means opening up that case one more time. Whereas if we were to try to find a, we have access to that building, we have the right to use it, as long as it's used for town function, town, town purposes. And seems to me that a grant could be obtained for that, that would be fine, I don't see how anybody could have any problem with it. But, first of all, you've got to determine the need.
Yeah.
What, what are you gonna use it for, you know? When you consider what the condition is, there's no heat, there's no furnace, there's no running water. It's gonna take a tremendous amount of money, just to bring it up to a point where it's usable, you know, so, no question, it's a big can of worms.
The other, the other question, which we haven't, you know, you have this OSHA thing, I don't, I don't, I don't wanna get, you know, I don't, like you say, not knowing when it was built, uh, you know, do we have, you know, like they had the incident we had here, which was got resolved, the fires in the ceiling.
Which turned out to be not a success.
Or make sure that we do not default on making sure that that is checked, if we do do that, you know.
That would have to be part of the picture, a lot, a lot of questions.
Yeah.
You have to, you have to, and, and anything, you know.
Did we have a, um, I was told by the, uh, a while back, that the building inspector said there was a, a radon system put in there, I didn't, I didn't see it.
I.
My cousin has one at his house for over twenty-five years, and I said, no, Donald, I, I never saw one on the town hall.
I don't either.
No, I, I.
You definitely see it. No, I've been, that's on the outside, yeah.
The van.
As far as I know, there, there's no, there's no radon system in that.
Okay, I'll just have to, you can turn that with.
That's just from, I've observed the same thing you have.
Yeah.
There's nothing evidence of a radon, there's no evidence of a radon system.
But like you say, you know, between the heating system, you know, the oil tag, and one, if I remember right, you said somebody went in there one time and took some copper, all the copper, all the copper piping out of there, so that's.
Yeah.
Any visible copper that was, any copper that was visible would have removed, and the only copper left in that building is in the walls that don't move.
Yeah, and the ventilation system is all torn apart.
Now, it's, it's a mess, it's a mess.
It's a real mess. You saw the pictures like that.
Yeah.
We don't, you know, I, it, it, it would take a lot to, to refurbish that building, to make it happen.
Right, yeah.
Do you agree, or, I mean, I.
Personally, I, I just give it back to the owners, and, and then it becomes on the tax roll, then you can, then you can give the owners, whoever they say that owns it, give them a couple of years to get, bring the building up to pro territory now, but, but that's my opinion, never put it back on the tax roll, we have on the plan to develop, and it'll be far cheaper
The only thing we.
To build a brand-new building, and refurbish that once you get it from the grant.
And anything we.
And what are we gonna use it for, we have this huge building here.
Yeah. And anything we do with that, we run through the attorney first.
Yeah.
To, to see, because who knows if there's a claim that if you hand it back, it's, well, you didn't care for the premise, and now I'm going to sue you to repair it,
Well, best.
because I gave it to you in good condition, and you gave it back to me in this condition, so, just making sure we're covered for whenever it is.
Yeah, it's been fourteen years, but, I mean, if we can't get it any money, I would just assume give it back to the people who own it, and then we can at least get tax revenue.
Well, first we gotta find out.
Yeah, you gotta find out, that's the thing that, that's the lawyer thing.
You're the guy that, that is mentioned in here all the time, which you have it in two parts.
Then if we make a recommendation to the selectman, the, the recommendation could provide options to the selectman, right? We could say our recommendation is either that the town, if you can find use for, for this premises, or sell it, I mean, I don't know if finding use for that building is, is responsibility of economic development, especially if it's a use that may not be within the confines of, of economic development, right, it could be.
Could be something else good in there.
It could be town use for administrative purposes or something like that, who all knows, so, um, we just, if we're going to make a recommendation, we just need to be clear on what that is, and make sure that it's something that we can recommend based upon what the court made us say.
Oh, I agree, I agree, I mean, you, do you have an opinion on, or, you've been in the real estate business for quite a while, well.
Sure, but if we don't have a use for it, and it's not in our place to say so, and we're not getting any collective feedback from anybody saying that it's great, maybe handing it back over, or giving up the, or opening the door, you know.
You know, the issue is handing it back over to who, that's the question, I mean, I'm going through this, I just can't, it's just, it's just hard to decide for it, it's just, yeah.
That's a tough document.
It goes one way, and then it goes the other way, and then it goes back and forth, and I'm saying, whoa, what is going on here?
It's, it's, if you look at that document, it's amazing, the court has decided everything quite audibly, it really is.
Uh-huh, okay. Thanks. Or at least open, open the door to a couple of these parties, if there's ten of them, and say.
Well, he's got it, he's got two pages here where mail, uh, letters were sent out to anybody that's wants to get onto Van Marre and claiming, and it's, it's, it's in here, and nobody's from what I can see, nobody's come forward, except that one gentleman that has been pursuing those court cases, and that's been.
So at this point, we don't have a recommendation or, or a use for, do we wanna keep this on the agenda to discuss again, I mean, with the, we put it on here to do research on the documents and have that pulled, we have it in our hands, do we wanna remove this from the agenda until we have a solid recommendation, at which point we can add it back on and reintroduce it, I just don't know if it will, if the next meeting is gonna accomplish it.
I just don't want it to fall by the wayside, that's my opinion, I just don't want, I, you know, if we take it off the agenda, we need to keep a document somewhere, then we have to come back to this one area of it.
With the deadline a date?
Do you?
A deadline, a date? What, what date would you like, Peter?
I don't have a deadline, because the building's gonna sit there, and it's still gonna be deteriorating.
Yes.
One use, and, and, like, like you say, everything, the course of doing business, to get things refurbished, or surveyed, is going up. And we can't afford that. Town cannot afford that.
I, I don't see what we need the building for, this.
We don't, I don't either.
This building still has empty classrooms in it, doesn't it? It, it's totally being used?
Everything being used in one way or another.
Okay. I thought you still had a couple classrooms, now at the end that you are using.
Yeah.
Well, then, if we decide that what we're gonna do, we have to go to a town meeting on this, as far as refurbishing that building, and if people hear about two hundred and fifty, three hundred thousand dollars, and even apply.
Yeah, I, I can see that, I think even it will apply. Got a lot of, if I could make a recommendation, this is just my own opinion, you have a new administration taking over in about five weeks. My suggestion is this group, either this meeting, or a subsequent meeting, just simply come up with a recommendation for them to pursue the project.
Yeah.
You don't have to, I wouldn't say anything, you don't have to say that you feel it, it should be sold, you know, or should be refurbished, just say that you wanna go on record as an organization, that you would like to see it, the project opened up, though with the question opened up, to see if some determination could be made. I'd let it go with that, and see where that new, new, the new administration would go with that, but at least you're on record as saying, we're not happier than just seeing it sit there. You don't necessarily have a, a use for it, but at the same time, you, you, you're just putting yourself on record that maybe something should be done to that building. So not may, take the maybe out completely, because something certainly should be done to that.
Do you want to finish it up before you left office?
No. If I had, if I wanted to do that, we're done a long time ago, um, no, it's, it's just that it's one little out of sight, out of mind there, until you drive by it, it's easy to forget it, you drive by it, you don't even think about it, but you're all right in the sense that it, the building shouldn't be let to go much longer, every, every year they get, it sits there, it's gonna cost more to fix it.
Yeah.
And is it, is there any point fixing it?
That's, they're pouring, alright, did we want to table this in the next meeting, we could table it?
No, why don't we just table it in the summer meeting? That way you'll have the election, our next meeting is not election day.
Well, when does the new administration?
Or not go up.
So we get.
So we, alright, so.
But after election day, when are, like, when is your term run, or?
The new, the new administration takes over on the eighteen, two weeks after election day.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay.
This is November, or fourteen, not before.
Eighteen, if you're.
No, my glasses aren't where I look at, sorry.
So is that, who came to us to table it until December?
My wife.
And we say.
I just think, I think you'd, you would feel better.
Table it in December, we'll have a new administration, like Link said, and.
I think you'd just feel better coming on record, and just moving, saying if we think.
Yeah. Okay. Alright, so can we have a motion to table item E, former town hall to the December meeting? Actually, there is no December meeting. January meeting?
Oh, yeah, not the January meeting, no, I guess, so we.
And we put it on record, and it goes back to the next administration.
So we have time to write a recommendation, then we can break to this meeting, approve the letter, and then approve it back to January meeting. So we can work on those, boarding that, and then. So can we have a motion to table item E, former town hall to December?
Yep. Yep.
I'll shut down.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
In January.
New business.
Wait, you mean January?
January, yes, January, did I say December? New business, former chairman, Mr. Jeffrey Cooper.
Yep.
Uh, drainage issues in the industrial park, he wanted to address committee?
Let me introduce this guy. Let me introduce this guy. Yeah, oh, we, yeah. Um, um, three weeks ago, month ago, Jeff came to me and expressed a serious concern about the drainage issues at the industrial park. Basically, he's been under the, under the impression from what you folks have been doing, that you're just expanding the industrial park. And he was saying to me that the, um, the drainage, we're talking about water system drainage, runoff water, not storage. When the park was built, there was a, a, um, holding, seven pond built, halfway down the hill, three quarters of the way down the hill, which was intended to filter out sand coming from, coming off the road, and that has failed completely. So, it turns out that two years ago, when the Rails to Trails project was being done, I was asked to go down and look at the, uh, and right at the beginning, as, as the Rails to Trails project crosses industrial park road, about a hundred feet to the right, um, there was a torrent of water coming down that hill, we happened to have excessive water in December of that, of twenty-three, another excessive run of water could rain in, in January twenty-four, this was in January twenty-four, and it wasn't a stream coming down that hill, there was a torrent, there was an actual river. And what it did was, it washed out whatever they had already prepared, intend, it was intended to go under the road, and they have fixed all that now. So when the water comes down that hill, it goes under the road and dumped into the field, it's just that, what, the catch base, the, uh, seven pond was intended to do was catch all that water coming down the hill, take the seven out of it, and slowly release it down the hill, but since the catch basin of seven pond has failed, the, it doesn't do that anymore, it just comes in and comes out, so, he starts an investigation, I'm gonna let him take it from here.
Okay. On my investigation, I got up to the dam, and.
And the dam had been breached over the top. About five feet of it is gone. The bottom of the dam itself is gone, the water just goes directly underneath. And there's no slowing the water down all the way to where the railroad tracks and the trailers. Now, we had had the state some years ago gotten involved when we started to know noticing se- uh sediment areas. One of the areas is where the pipes are on the side of the hill. They're about two feet each in diameter. The ground started sinking. You could hear the water passing, but they weren't coming out the pipes. The water was going and still does it, goes into the pond, travels across, which there is no pond really, it's just going in one area and out and down the hill. This is gonna have to be reengineered. And especially if you're planning an expansion of the I-Voc. Because the present system, in my opinion, will not sustain any more water than what you've got going through there now, except when you get rainstorms. And the heat in here is a little too much. Excuse me. Uh, I've got numerous pictures. Give you an example here. Have you noticed anything in the past two days that it's running a little bit? But it's doing. This is the stack. This is where normally the water comes in up here. This is all gone.
Yeah.
This here is the piping system that's jumping into the sediment pond. Then you may notice there are tires and et cetera on all sides of the hill that turned into a landfill. Yeah.
It's a major, right?
This was some of your plumbing?
Yeah. That's it, that's it, yeah, DB, tires, clothing. And what's causing that is where brush has been allowed to roll almost right up to the road. We, we at one time kept that cleared all the way back and had to start that by because you can see it from anywhere. The rain, this, your children was on holiday, we kept clean.
So what is your positive?
Well. You're gonna be, the state's gonna get it well. That's for sure. Because unfortunately, they're gonna be, if the president, if you call him head of the town, they're gonna have to hold any more water.
Well, it's actually a bad thing.
Did you have any?
Yeah. Then I went, my daughter went to CVS and came back, she said, Dad, that was a hundred and seven thousand. Well, I called it. This is some of the it's just coming from, some of that is coming out, that's all. All it's just, there's some of the tires and everything that they thrown over the side of the hill. Trying to find some of the systems that are still in place on the side of the hill, which was part of the Sterling, it's a water mill. We're going probably maybe around eighteen thousand. Eventually went broken. So what it did, just the point village, again, for the village.
Are you interested in digging by the way on the back?
No, it's just, we're not good at doing sign language. You wanna cover the others, where were yours? Anybody wanna go? Um, this is, oh, you through here, a lot of sewer cover that is is moving around.
You go by the first bit, which is. There's a building on the left.
This, this is. Oh, by exit. Where? Some more coming to tow, their facility under the road and goes down the hill. This is the upper road and the lower road. This is where the sewer line. Human waste joined. This this goes right into that line. And then goes down the hill to the lower road and joins in down there. Because lines are.
So these lines, do they run together with the water lines, Jeff? When you originally, when you originally put everything in, did you put the water lines with the
Sewer lines.
Water lines close to each other or, you know, resurrect?
Well, you gotta keep them certain.
Yeah, no, I, I, no, I know that, I just was wondering, like, are they same side of the hill, the same side of the hill? I mean, same side of the road?
Basically, but you can pump the water up to the tank, the tank provides the pressure.
If you help.
Whereas sewer has the flow on its own unless you put it in.
All right, you did this one yourself then.
Yeah, my daughter went with me.
I mean, this is really, really great. I guess, what would you propose now in the future is of the future development and then proposal now for the basic mattering up and into that.
Well, this here, it's going more on separation pond and everything, it's gonna have to be totally redone. Right now, they're not holding any water back. Whatever comes, it's, and it could possibly go back something over again. If enough material comes down and gets the water, stop making a dam. I don't know just what your plans are, what you'd like to do. Something in the parking. I don't know what the state's position is. Well, I know their position was, they want that all ripped out of there.
Yeah, before it's gonna cost a lot more than we have.
Well, it was the first place was here, that was forty years ago. That's probably four times.
Yeah.
And they have all the new man there, so they put in. Well, the thing is, because because this project, they put in with expansion of the park underground. That's something that would have to be worked out with the state.
Anyway, whatever, I'm relaxed.
And have to be a breath room maintenance and planning.
What you thought?
Yeah, we're gonna.
I haven't yet, but that's that, I'm trying.
You're getting closer.
Yeah. She did stay a holiday in Express last time.
Yeah, yeah.
But you know, um, our inspector used to write on the grant, or my new.
I'm gonna see if I can.
Oh, yeah.
Ten grand, nine million, I must say, right? Okay, so we.
We had a grant writer that writes grants at a town meeting. And she said she wrote, writes a grant.
She was taking all the stuff off.
I don't know, I don't know if they have her number.
Well, Kyle Holland, from all.
Yeah.
That was too bad.
Thanks, for that word.
I'm just saying, there was a woman that stood up at the meeting and said, I'm writing, I write grants. So I don't know who she is, I don't know if the town, if someone in the town.
Hundred two percent greed in the house. They don't know how to understand any human. I didn't know if I.
Yeah, I.
Well, it should.
Well, and you don't know what effect that has on the knees.
She was, she was here forever. The woman first come.
More.
Yeah.
Back up, what you say, back there.
And.
He keeps going back and back.
Well, he puts, and he goes, he goes down here and here we have the wall of trench. Yeah, that's what I'm saying, the water's coming out of the way out.
Yeah, just play it on the ball.
That's why I'm wrong. Myself, personally, I'm kind of.
Yeah, I would ask you, yeah, for anybody.
I think this one here is the.
Maybe put that on Facebook page.
It's, what type is that?
How do you get to that location?
You don't care, you're over five percent.
The industrial box.
Yeah.
And when you get to where your two cores are.
Yeah.
With boundary line, you'll see a trench.
Right.
It's all grown in. That has to get removed.
That's all inside the, where they're gonna dig in there.
Yeah, well, here in the back and it comes down and it's.
Right.
It's taking water from the.
Those fire.
Part of fire, part of the pot.
Yeah. Say all grown in right now.
I think.
That's all grown in right now, that area there.
Is it a?
Yeah, I know, I'm exposed. When I was taking the pictures of that, I I saw the water coming down around and going under the road.
Uh, we have a problem with the kids and the pond doesn't hold water. They now make campfires down there. And they have cuts of a brush and stacked it up and they burn and have little campfires in the industrial park, which.
Can we hold on here?
I can get you change. My daughter said that, and she can have top made and made, fax them over or whatever they do electronic.
Yeah.
For, she said like three dollars, seventy cents, the girl at CVS.
You can download them all through Dropbox.
Oh, yeah.
Dropbox.
Yeah, I don't understand all this latest line or such. But I told Link that I would go up there and clear a path for anybody who wants to take the trip down into the pond and see the actual condition of the pond, the dam and et cetera.
How would you, how would you put it, Matt, when you say?
Well, I've watched it enough going over. Out of, out of.
Jeff, can you see it on that picture, that's on the wall of the original, when you go to try and replace it? Is that, is the pond visible on the picture?
So that pond was a, was visible on the road, especially the lower road. You could just drive up and look over the embankment and look right down into the pond. I had two problems with the selection when I asked, we have some money to clear and keep it clear, because we weren't keeping it clear.
Yeah.
Jeff? Things are tight. Money is short. So you see how far that.
Yeah.
So I thank you for your, appreciate you, look at some there. It's uh between that and the uh uh one recommendation on your lot across from the voice. That was all kept clear. It would make that lot more sellable. If you just go in there, rip all that scrub out of there, put it in piles, not huge piles. But when the snow comes and it gets cold, burn it. And this will open that up, there's a beautiful view coming out of that lot. You can look right across it, down into the Sterling, the relation up the other side. One time, somebody made it a recommendation, big replacement Congress, because they're damn bad at field. But everything in there is grown in. It, it's uh, it needs to en- enhance the beauty. Have you heard that?
Yes.
I can be that one.
That's what I was saying, and that's what I'm amazed is enhancing the beauty of Sterling.
Yeah.
That's true.
You have lots of tenants.
Well, we gotta handle a good project up on the hill. Calling you is really for copper plumbing.
I must be with the rock.
So that's where deep the dark for the money. And I'll go up there and I can only do a couple hours probably a day. But I'll make it so you can walk down in there.
Well, if you need help, just let, you know, soon, you know, I mean, I'm a little bit homesick.
Yeah.
Uh, to walk somewhere down.
Peter would love that.
But someone needs to have like a tree service covered?
J P, actually, I rounds cakes that uh.
I'd probably get a close on it, but. Yeah, that's what I mean, we'd have to get some clothes, but can we get some clothes, some, have a tree service come in and just chip chip it and just. So we have money in the account, I mean, do we have to put it all the bid over a certain amount, Link?
Yeah.
What's uh, what's?
Twenty five hundred, I think. Is that right? A project like that.
You probably should just put up a bid here, I would suggest you do that.
Um, all right, well, thank you, thank you, Jeffrey.
Thank you very much, Jeff.
Okay, thank you.
The next step might say, Link is the town engineer and inspect some things like this when it comes to corners and.
I would say you would be the next stop on this floor.
Yeah.
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 So can, can we contact the town engineer to go up there and look at this and and give an assessment of it? And then we can go from there, make sure that town personnel is looking at this and.
The town engineer will be here, um, Steve, on Thursday morning to look at two other projects. It would be an ideal time to have and just look at that group.
Okay.
And he has been around this neighborhood for quite some time, so chances are, he might even have some, you know, prior knowledge of the thing too.
Okay.
I'll have him look at it if you like.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. So I would say first step would be, let's refer this to the town engineer to assess it.
As we can.
Let, let me make that fresh most definitely. But we can keep it in mind for the grant writing as well. Um, you know, maintenance and the park.
Well, if, if it's a serious issue, we should probably look into just having someone clear, go up with Jeffrey and and figure out the area and then put that area up to bid and just have someone come in and just open it right up. That way you can, that way you can really assess the the issue.
Get that brush out of there.
That's what I'm saying.
It's no longer a hiding.
Why don't we flag it? Someone go up with you, that could go for you, we could flag it. And that way somebody would know, while the town engineer would go with Jeff or whatever and flag it. That way, it's flagged, someone comes up, they look at it, we get prices from, you know, Ashland, Lewis Tree, you know, ABC Tree, and just get prices from U Tree Services. And have somebody go up, go in there and just chip it, take it away, you know, done. Cut it right down, that way whoever's gonna engineer, when they go there, they can visibly see and assess. You know, if you cut a path and you walk down there, you've still got all this brush, you know what I'm saying? Open it up so you can see what what someone's dealing with, that way you can better get a better price too.
But it helped too with the town engineer looks at and, if the town engineer recommends and you get the professional opinion from the town engineer of, hey, this needs to be cleared out, when it comes to getting the funding approved through the town and and substantiating why you need to spend those town funds.
Yeah.
And you have an engineer report saying, that needs to be cleared, it it's good to substantiate why you're spending those.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll start with, if you get town engineers here this week, have them look at it, have them make a recommendation on clearing brush so we can assess
Yeah.
the situation and then we can take it up at the next meeting and they'll.
Yeah.
And then we can. The name of the engineering company is Tow Engineering. T O W N E. They have, that's what I say, he's, he's, I mean, Don Harper used to run the place, he did, but he's the guy that always went and lived around.
Okay, so with that, so with those takeaway items, we have a motion to, um, well, do we need a motion to approve the referrals of the town engineer technically?
I don't.
Not just a motion to table, we have our takeaways.
Yeah, I'll just see who to get.
Okay, so can we have a motion to table the drainage issues in the industrial park to the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, so next item of business, we talked about this briefly at the beginning. Judy resigned from the committee last week to do some of her health issues. So we have another hope. Uh. And I'll reach out, or if you can send your address, we'll reach out and I'll send our files to the committee. So we have a motion to um, remove the resignation of Judy's injury from the new business?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Request of the fire path, so we have a letter here from James Sweet, uh, Fire Marshal, with apparently some fires over this area of the park as well. Um, back behind the um business facility there. Um, the letter's here, but essentially with the drying weather, they had to respond to some calls uh back there. Numerous brush and grass fires in the area on top of the ledge, they have found the fire pit being used, uh, but not extinguished before leaving the area. Um, so in order to get the fire attack hose to these fires, they're pulling the hose up to the face of the ledge because they cannot access the area with their brush units. And at this time of year, brush fires tend to run underground, requiring uh copious amounts of water to extinguish. And then forestry backpacks cannot carry enough water. And their forestry backpacks do not carry enough water to accomplish the task. If possible, no trespassing sign at the beginning of the path, they help to deter use of this area. And the fire marshal is also willing to meet and walk the area in question with any members as well. I might be willing to take them up on this in, in the daytime for when my schedule allows, then we can set up a warning and, and I can send out a, a time to everybody and let them know and figure out a time that works with the fire marshal's schedule.
Like I've looked there myself and.
Does early in the morning work for this group typically for their sets or not? Like eight in the morning? And not everybody has to go, it's only if you want, right, I mean, it's, it's, you know, it is what it is. Doesn't necessarily take the whole committee, but if you're interested, and we'll have to, I mean, we could pick up a no trespassing sign and put out that one too. We could pick up a, a couple of those.
Not go to strip them down? I mean, you can put them now. I get metal ones and nail them with roofing nails, but yeah.
Can, can we have a town maintenance put up some no trespassing signs there? Is that something that we could recommend?
You know, once it gets cleared because of that. Yeah, well, if we gotta clear for the, for the fire path as well, then we could probably, if, once the town engineer recommends these, then we could have those tree services do both of these things at the same time.
My patients.
Yeah, we'll have, she'll converge the water stone, yes.
And depending on that, that path being cut is. If I can be able to take care of that. Yeah, scrub brush car, I could just go over it, chop it down, depending how much it is or what it looks like, so. All right, so I'll reach out to James Sweet, can you forward me his contact information? I'll reach out at the end and I'll, I'll see if we can set up a warning. To just walk the area, you know, and just take a look at it and see what we gotta do up there and see if it's something that volunteer wise, we could just take care of ourselves, so there you go. Volunteer wise, we could just take care of ourselves or what we need to hire Google for.
Depends how wide it is. I mean, you probably gonna want something that's ten A wide, at least twelve B wide, be my guess, they wanna drive their truck down it.
Yeah, we'd have to ask them how, how wide it is.
I would say twelve B. Be relatively realistic.
We'll start with, I'll reach out to them and say, okay. Did anybody else have any thought on that?
The other thing we gotta resolve up there is that, I don't know, spinoff just getting ridiculous up there. We gotta, we gotta look into that. Link, did you see Brown Road last couple days? You see what a mess that is? My daughter-in-law, we heard it from our house at nine thirty at night, she went down there. There was over twenty cars and trucks on the side of the road. She called the state police, state police referred her to DEP. Supposedly they said that DEP came out, because they said something about state property. The Patrick Pond area, then we got.
They're right Port of Pond, you know where the, where the bridge got washed out where the blue trail starts? Right before you go up the hill to the transfer station, Saturday night, I came home from eating out with my wife and we drove down that way, Brown Road, and there was about eight to ten vehicles and there was a couple on the side of the road and it was kids partying. And that's the people that are burning out right there, they found their new party spot, I guess. And then when I was going down, past the old charcoal pit, about three or four vehicles in a hurry were coming at me like at about fifty miles an hour to get there, so yeah, big trucks and stuff.
Well, it was so bad, she could not come back this way after she went through, they just blocked the road. She had to go all the way around to come back home again. And what, and I remember that next day, I'm calling the warning, and the road was a mess. There was car parts all over the place, we pushed, oh yeah. And they're digging up the road.
And why wouldn't the police come?
Brown Road, Port of Pond.
I know, but why wouldn't the police come?
Well, we had to do, you know, she had to, she wanted to do something.
Why wouldn't the police?
Because it wasn't under their jurisdiction, they said, it was under DEP. And I said, well, DEP, and they said something about state property. I says, that is state property. He said, it's Patrick Pond, state property. Well, they were parked and everything.
It's Port of Pond, that's not Patrick Pond.
Port of what?
That is not Patrick Pond, Patrick Pond is in Griswold.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry, not Patrick Pond, Port of Pond, I'm sorry, Port of Pond.
That they only, Brown Road, right. The road itself belongs to the town, that makes it state police responsibility.
Well, they told her, no.
I, I know, the thing is, it's a misunderstanding, but the point is, industry told them, whatever she told them, they, they were lucky to come out.
Well, they supposedly said. And whether they can, I mean, it was ten o'clock.
They said econ releases what they said, it's like the game one, game one actually has more power than the state true.
Yeah, well, somebody's gotta do something. They're tearing up the roads, they're putting, we just paved these roads, not to, you know, not till long ago, but there's roots in the road like this now. You know, and, and the trash, I, I pulled over and I had to kick some of that plastic stuff on the way, just so people wouldn't run over it. I took a couple pieces, they're dumped in the air, just tricked this up down the road, you said, okay, throw it into the trash. I do it in the trash. Trunk or car parts, it was pieces this big. At nine thirty at night, I didn't hear, she was outside with the kids on the front porch. And, and she called and she said, what's going on, man, what are you talking about? She says, you, you don't hear that? I said, great, buddy. I said, well, she took a run down and she couldn't come back that way because they blocked the road. She had to go all the way around to Billy Pond.
It's a nice ride. It's a nice ride.
That was, that was, I couldn't believe it, it was at nine thirty at night.
Nice ride in the dock.
Very dark.
But that's getting ridiculous.
So can we have a, a motion to table the request of fire path in industrial parks?
Yes.
Any other business to come before the?
And it was mentioned before.
I, I think at some point, maybe next year, we should check in and start to look at, make sure that everybody's in compliance with the comments.
Okay, I'm gonna review and.
Yeah, beginning of the next year, next year, January meeting.
For, let's put that on the January agenda then, comments review.
Everybody, make sure everybody's in compliance, working on being compliant.
That'll give an update on projects and process as well?
Yes.
Maybe we can make that an annual review.
Yeah, we have the photographs, so we know, we just had to dumb it up. Yeah, and table stuff. We, we have, what, three years with the photos now, so we know people are the SS. And we probably have some photos in there of the, the drainage ditch, aerial photos. Because we just had table take a ton of photos again.
Who would I, who would I send these, copy of these photos to?
Uh, EDC coordinator Sarah.
Oh, okay.
If you're getting in touch with her or if you have your daughter getting in touch with her, she can arrange the digital. If you get in touch with her or if your daughter gets in touch with Sarah, she can arrange the electronic transfer. If your daughter wants to get.
I'll have my daughter get in touch with her because with all this other stuff.
Jeffrey, dual purpose, she's EDC coordinator and treasurer.
Okay, where are you going?
All right, any, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'm sorry.
Okay, two second, all favor, bye. Seven twenty-nine, please second.
Mr. Google, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
We like the pictures, so I'm sorry you guys spent very seven hours.